I call this public hearing on capital improvements, on the capital improvement plan to order. Jim, do you want to, Dr. Beers, do you want to read the?
Yes. At this point in our meeting, citizens are invited to address the school board concerning the CIP proposal. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. When a speaker's name is called, the speaker comes to the podium and states his or her name for the record and directs his or her comments to the chair of the board. In order to promote, there it is, a listening and respectful environment, please avoid applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstration when the speaker is addressing the board. The school board's role is to listen to the speaker rather than to respond to his or her comments. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make his or her comments. The school board asks each speaker to respect this time limitation. Time may not be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Cook?
Good evening. I'm Brooke Crookston, a senior at Lafayette High School, and I've run cross-country and track for the past three years. And I want to talk about the bridge across a swamp to the Whisk Trail. The first thing I want to say is that the swamp that we have to cross on a daily basis is extremely dangerous. There are many accounts of my teammates and myself falling in and almost getting injured, and I know people have. One of my teammates have fallen face-first into the mud. That is extreme, it's disgusting, number one. And we, every day, someone gets their shoes destroyed, and our running shoes can range up over $150, which is getting destroyed in one step. Also, down the swamp, there is a huge hill that we have to go down, and people fall on that all the time. We have to cross these small boards that move, and we, sometimes people take the time to try and fix them so we can get across easier, but that, that takes time, too. And to get to the same place without going to the swamp would, in season traces, this is the neighborhood next to Lafayette, or on Long Hill Road, is an extra about 1.5 miles, which if you're walking, it can take over 20 minutes. Running takes about 15. And the, also, I run year-round, so in the winter, it gets extremely cold and it freezes, so that's also another hazard, that the frozen water falling in is extremely dangerous. And I think the swamp would save a lot of time and safety and money. Thank you.
Thank you. It would take me longer than 15 minutes to run it, I can assure you.
Lisa Hatcher, please.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Hatcher. I am a former teacher at Lafayette High School, a parent of an LHS student athlete, and the committee chair for the Lafayette Athletic Booster Club for the walkway from Lafayette to Whisk. I have begun to put a team together to evaluate the best options for a safe and reliable access to the fields of Whisk. I am asking for the opportunity to explore reasonable options identifying a good, long-term solution to the standing problem. In this process, I have encountered many passionate people wanting to help our students. Since our campus size and lack of facilities does not provide for many athletes to stay on the property, using Whisk is a great opportunity. All we need is safe, quick access to the facility. I am asking to keep the walkway in the CIP that was approved last school year. I would love to get all stakeholders together and work together to find the best solution. There are numerous teams impacted by traveling to Whisk for practices or games. They include baseball, girls soccer, boys soccer, field hockey, cross-country, and football. They must go down a steep hill and go over planks to cross water and mud. I have heard of many stories of them getting muddy and falling down, their shoes getting wet, and being in discomfort for all of practice, and several of them talking about water down at the bottom. We need to remedy this situation. It also appears that there is quite a range of estimates related to the solution. In the 2009 CIP, there was an approved walkway to Whisk with a budget of $75,000, with a tier level of importance of Tier Two. It was scheduled to be finished in 2014-15. This time, there is a proposed budget of 1.1 million. There must be a solution somewhere in the middle. Please don't take off the CIP, don't take this off the CIP again. Let's find a sustainable, long-term solution that makes sense. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hatcher.
Good evening, Dr. Heron, Chairman Kelly, and our school board members. My name is Kristin Holm, and I am currently serving as the treasurer of the Lafayette High School Athletic Booster Club. I have come before you this evening to reiterate some of the facts that we have shared with you, as well as our city and county officials regarding the challenges Lafayette High School and our athletics program currently face. Almost a year ago, the school board voted to include three improvements at Lafayette: the gym, the walkway, and the field lights in consecutive years 2017, 18, and 19 of the CIP due to their immediate necessity. Many who have worked tirelessly to advocate for these needs were disappointed to learn two weeks ago that the CIP committee had recommended that the walkway to Whisk be removed and the lights be delayed until 2023 of the CIP. Our needs have existed for many years. Evidence of this lies within your previous capital improvement plans. In the six-year CIP budget for fiscal year 2009-10 through 2014-15, the walkway to Whisk was budgeted for the 2014-15 school year in the amount of $75,000, as was the gym in the amount of $2.7 million. Yet some still considered in 2016, seven years later, the request for an auxiliary gym to be a surprise at $2.4 million, despite Lafayette's loss of gym space and athletic fields at James Blair due to demolition. The auxiliary gym will not be part of the solution until the fall of 2018. Lafayette's campus was built to meet its needs in 1973, and in '97 and 2010, new high schools were built on much larger campuses that meet the current needs of their academic and athletic programs. Lafayette remains at a disadvantage exacerbated by the demolition of James Blair. The compromise for Lafayette's lack of fields has been to use the county fields at neighboring Whisk. These fields do not belong to our school. Our teams have no priority for practice schedules and no home-field advantage for games and playoffs. These are shared fields. A walkway to these fields at minimum provides safe passage for our athletes, as well as affords them the opportunity to remedy academic and training needs prior to practice. Regarding the request for lighting at Lafayette, currently, Warhale High School has four lights on their softball field and eight lights on their baseball field. Jamestown High School has five lights on their softball field and seven on their baseball field. Lafayette's small 50-acre campus has neither a softball field or a baseball field and no field lighting. The request for lighting was made not to resolve the obvious equity issue, but as part of a complex total solution to the existing needs at Lafayette. As an example, soccer and track cannot use the practice field simultaneously. Lights would accommodate a staggered practice schedule and keep our students from having to travel off-campus for practice. It is of growing concern that Lafayette continues to fall victim to the repetitive pattern of adding and deleting these much-needed improvements to and from the capital improvement plan. The school board's vote on last year's CIP showed a strong commitment to providing a complete solution for Lafayette, and we anticipate that this year will bring forward progress.
Thank you, Mrs. Holm.
Thank you.
Nash McDowell, please.
Hello. My name is Nash McDowell. I am a sophomore at Lafayette High School, and I play varsity field hockey. Regarding the issue of the passage to and from Lafayette and Whisk, the conditions of the passage are deplorable at best. To get down the field, you have to descend a hill only to find a two-by-four plank that guides you through a muddy marsh. And when you stand at the field, the field hockey field on Lafayette campus, you can hear the girls of the opposite team, or the girls that are running, you can hear them screaming, so you know where they are. Because the, it's extremely difficult to find a way to get down there, because I've seen girls that have fallen on their behinds, on their faces. There's been a girl this past, this season, that has dropped her phone in the mud. Regardless of fault of dropping her phone, it should not have been ruined, because there should not have been mud and water to drop it in. The water and the mud are very, very, very good at ruining shoes. As our track star mentioned, she has, and her teammates have, ruined some very nice running shoes. I've seen it. I have also fallen victim to the mud, and it's a great inconvenience having to wash your shoes, dry them, and have them for the next day. Also, after we've run, that's about a four-mile run, getting back across the marsh is extremely difficult, because you're tired, you're sweaty, and you, that's not a good situation. Also, the planks are very, very narrow, so when 15 to 17 girls are trying to get them, get across them at once, it's extremely difficult, because they move under, I mean, over the instability of the mud, also, they become displaced. There's no really regular, regularity for it. There's, there's vegetation that's overgrowing, so you also have to be able to move it while balancing. It's just not a good situation. It's also not very safe, because if you were to practice in the evening, you need to be able to get there and get back. It's also, it's kind of inconvenient, because you need to have a buddy system. It's kind of an unsaid rule, where you need to have at least two people with you for safety reasons. Overall, it would, it needs definite improvement. At the very least, it needs a bridge to get there safely, get back safely, and to be safe. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kim Owens, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kim Owens. I think I've pretty much coached everywhere here in the James City County area, from public to private. And this is my second year at James City County at Lafayette High School as JV coach. And unfortunately, due to our fields being so small and our problems, we've got to share with band, too, sometimes, we have to go over to Whisk to practice. Our field just isn't always ours, and if it rains, it's probably as bad as the bog, which never dries out down there. And so, we're asking these kids to run over there and meet us at the Whisk, and thank goodness, they don't even have to kick all their gear, because then they would be trying to run with their gear, their backpack, and some of these kids bring three bags to practices. So luckily, it all goes in the back of my car, and I drive around and meet them. And we've actually talked about running down Long Hill, and as soon as I thought of that, I went, no, that's not a good idea either, because then I have to worry about the safety. Are they getting there safe? So again, these are the challenges we have to face, not only as coaches, but when the athletes told me what it was like, I thought they were trying to get out of running. And so, I went and looked at it, and I have two partial replacements, and there was no way I was going down that hill, because I was not going to be on my fanny. And I can tell you that I have had several athletes fall because of what Nash has told you, and these are some very strong athletic girls. They've done this so many times, you'd think they'd be pros at it, but that, for whatever reason down there, that, the stability on that little bit of walkway is never 100%. And so, when they come back and meet me at the Whisk, I try to make jokes and go, hey, you got some nice tattoos there, and, ooh, ooh, what happened to your pants? Oh, it's all over you. You know, so again, then they're coming to me, and we've got to try to clean them up a little bit and try to practice on. So again, I just hope there's some kind of simple, safe remedy that doesn't cost too much money, but so that we can continue to go over there. It's a great trail, and if you go behind Jamestown High School on the Greensprings Trail, they have wonderful, very small, not super sophisticated bridges, and it's doing the same thing. It's covering those muddy bogs. So we just would like to ask that somebody take a look at it and just see what we can do to get it to a better place for our kids. And there's people that walk their dogs in the community, so I appreciate it. Thank you. You have a tough task ahead of you. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Bambi Walters, please.
Good evening. My name is, excuse me, Bambi Walters, and I'm a resident of James City County. I have two children at Lafayette High School and one at Berkeley Middle School. The Bulldogs football team won tonight. They are undefeated, and they have great goalposts from James River, so I appreciate that. First time in 12 years, they've had a home game. I'm here tonight because I want to resubmit our petition that has over 800 signatures, asking the three things of this school board, as well as the Board of Supervisors, and the members of Williamsburg City as well. So I, I don't know how to officially do it, but I want to make sure that you guys agree. And if any of you came last year, the boosters put forth what would be a total solution for Lafayette High School with the demolition of James Blair and trying to maintain as many students as we could keep on our campus. And those three things included an auxiliary gym, which has been in and out of the budget for 17 years at Lafayette High School. It included the walkway to Whisk, which has been in and out of CIPs as well for many years, 2009, 2010, 2014, 15, and the most recent one, as well as lighting on the fields, which has been in and out as well. I'm here tonight because I'm aware that the auxiliary gym is going to take about two years instead of the one year to complete before it's open to students. James Blair is closed now, so we don't have access to those fields, and right now, the kids are walking still over to Whisk. And the money that's in the budget, I wanted to talk a little bit about a spending plan. That money's not going to be spent on the gym over the next year. It's going to be phased out over time. And it seems to me that you have an opportunity right now to do what the county has asked, and that is to come up with a strategic spending plan that looks at solving some of the needs now. Why isn't there a shuttle right now that takes kids over to Whisk that have to go? I mean, you, everybody's heard about safety, and it seems like, you know, there's people talking about having a shuttle, but why not the shuttle now? There's funding for it that's not going to go to the gym this year, and it's a need. In addition, if you look at the, the plan that was proposed over the 10 years, you have fiscal year 18 and 19 with the walkway and the lights on the fields. If the gym's not going to be done this year, why not put some of those resources towards solving the lights on the field? Or doing some partial walkways and reaching out to the community. I guess the last thing that I would say while we're here, because we haven't had an opportunity, is to thank you for the auxiliary gym. It means a lot to many of the students who are at Lafayette that it's moving forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Walters.
We appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Isaiah Wu, please.
All righty. Good evening. My name's Isaiah Wu. I'm a senior at Lafayette High School, and I run cross-country for two years. And I just wanted to share some of my experiences of journeying from Lafayette to the Whisk Trail. I remember the first time that I, my first practice, I was really scared, and I didn't, sorry, I didn't, I didn't know what I was going to get into. And I remember looking down the hill for the first time, and I was like, there, there's no way, like, I could get in a tire and roll down this thing, but then I can walk down. And I remember I slipped on, on pine needles many times going down the hill, and, and we got to the bottom, and I was like, all right, that was, that was tough. And then I had to cross a big old swamp, and there, there are only five little two-by-four planks down there, and they're, they're not, they don't go all the way across, so there's many, there's a lot of spots where you have to, like, walk in the mud. And as Brooke pointed out, I have, you know, 100, 120-dollar running shoes, and within a week, they're all muddy, and I have to wash them and dry them, and they still don't come out all right. And it's a shame, because I, you know, I spend a lot of money on them. I also remember last year, it had been raining for several days, pretty hard, and the, the entire swamp was, it wasn't a swamp anymore, it was a lake. The water was, like, just under your knees, so I mean, a foot, foot and a half of, of standing water. And I remember, like, the, the planks don't support weight on, on the water, and I remember we just, all of us, it was a, it was a consensus that we just waded through, and that was, that was, that was difficult. You know, your socks got all wet, and you weren't really in, it, it doesn't get you in the right mental place to go on an 8-10 mile run. And, yeah, and coming, coming back, you know, again, through the, through the swamp is, is not, it's just not a, it's not something I want to do. It's not fun. So, you know, I just wanted to share my experience, and thank you for your time.
I've never been in the mental place for an 8-10 mile run. Thank you, Mr. Wu.
Kathy Wollam, please.
Good evening, Dr. Heron, Chairman Kelly, and members of the school board. My name is Kathy Wollam, and I currently serve as president of the Lafayette High School Athletic Boosters. Last year, as you know, the school board included in its 10-year CIP three longstanding needs for Lafayette High School athletic facilities: the walkway to Whisk, the lights, and the auxiliary gym. The lights in '17 were for those few fields that Lafayette has on campus, and as Kristin Holm mentioned, the ability to use those fields a little bit more creatively, something we do pretty well at Lafayette. The walkway to Whisk was an effort to mitigate the stories you heard tonight from our student athletes. All of this was an effort to fulfill promises and bring Lafayette High School up to par with our athletic facilities, made again, all the more pressing by the demolition of James Blair. The inequities remain; therefore, the need for a sustainable solution remains. Again, to remind of last year, our community came forward with numerous support in many ways. We had interviews and hours and hours of research. By the way, the transparency of five to 10 years ago with tiers and ranking really did help, so something to keep in mind. That was helpful in us kind of piecing together the story. Then we also had 900-plus sign the online petition and a written petition. Our coaches, athletes, and parents hosted several open houses, which we are thrilled all of you did attend. Many individuals sent emails to you and members of the Board of Supervisors and Williamsburg City. Even homeowners associations got into the conversation, because they recognize the importance of healthy schools and student athletes as well. And again, 25 people, at least, I lost count, stood here before you and members of the Board of Supervisors to share their interest and their wish for these solutions. And Dr. Beers, they did have a listening and respectful approach, and I'm proud of every single one of the Lafayette community members that came forward. And last but not least, the student athletes, they were at these meetings. They were an active part of the process, and they, they remained engaged to witness progress. Please allow them to continue to see progress and our community at work. Thank you again for all you do.
Thank you, Mrs. Wu. Without any speakers, I will close this, the public forum on the proposed capital improvement plan, and call this meeting of the Williamsburg-James City County School Board to order. Can I get a motion for certification and closed session, please?
Mr. Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg-James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Serza?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Ms. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Ms. Serza, could you take the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Ms. Minor?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here, thank you. Motion for approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move the acceptance of the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. That takes us 6.01 announcements. Superintendent's report, Dr. Heron?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair. Safe Roots to School is celebrating its 20th year in International Walk to School Day on October 5th. International Walk to School Day is a global event involving communities from more than 40 countries walking and biking to school on the same day. This year, Matthew Waley and James River Elementary Schools are participating in Walk to School Day. As you may be aware, October is Disability History Awareness Month. Featured on our website are details about community events designed for parents of school-age students. Please visit wjccschools.org and click on Disability Awareness Slide for more information. So far this year, WJCC schools have celebrated Farm to School Days on September 21st and 22nd. Students enjoyed eating eggplants, squash, cucumbers, and peppers from Kilray Farm. This week, Virginia's Farm to School Week, locally grown red potatoes and spaghetti squash will be featured as side dishes on school lunch menus at all grades. SHIP's Consulting Chef will support cafeteria managers and staff with recipes and training to prepare these wonderful dishes. WJCC offers locally grown produce on school breakfast and lunch menus throughout the year as the harvest allows. This year, we've enjoyed a variety of melons, eggplants, summer squash, zucchini, a variety of sweet peppers, and cucumbers. This past summer, WJCC's Child Nutrition Services started a frozen local food initiative to acquire fresh vegetables at the peak of harvest and process them for use later in the year. Equipment to do this was purchased through the Williamsburg Health Foundation. We appreciate the Health Foundation's ongoing generous support of SHIP and Child Nutrition Services. PTSA Reflections is a nationally acclaimed student recognition program to encourage artistic creativity in the classroom and at home. Students of all grades and abilities are encouraged to explore their inner artist by creating theme-based artwork. The theme for the 2016-17 Reflections program is "What Is Your Story?" Students may explore one or all of the available art categories: dance choreography, film production, literature, music composition, photography, and visual arts. The submission deadline is Friday, October 21st, and additional information is available at Division Schools or on the PTA websites. Mr. Chair, those are all of the announcements I have this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are any, any announcements from any board members tonight? Tumble.
I have to put another plug in for the WJCC Education Foundation. The, there's going to be a grant workshop tomorrow that yours truly will be leading at 5:00 at the Annex, the 300 Annex Building of James Blair, so please, for any William, Williamsburg-James City County teachers, or, is it just for teachers? I'm not sure. Can, can?
Specialist, I think.
Specialist? Anyway, come, I guess I should know that, since I'm leading the discussion tomorrow, but anyway, to come out, and the deadline for the submissions is October 17th at 5:00 PM, or 11:00 PM, sorry.
Thank you very, it's definitely a worthwhile cause and a, and a good benefit to both our school system, our teachers, and the community, I believe, as well, too. That takes us to 7.01, citizens' comments. Do we have any citizen comment cards for the regular meeting? There we go. We move along to 8.01, award a contract for invitation for RFP number 1711110, engineering services for Norde Elementary School HVAC replacement. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Norde HVAC was approved as part of the fiscal year 2017 capital improvement plan, and Mr. Snipes is here to present this item this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. Chair?
Good evening, Mr. Snipes.
The current HVAC at Norde Elementary School was installed in 1995, and it is now beyond its useful life. As Dr. Heron said, this was approved in last year's, the school year CIP. And RFP was issued on August 5th of this year with the due date of September 6th. The project will include the The project will include the removal of the closed circuit cooler and boilers, pumps, heat pumps, chiller, air handler units, piping, and controls. It will provide for updated equipment for outdated controls, as well as eliminate the reliance on some R22 Freon. This is for the design of the system, it is not for the replacement of the system at this time, this is for the design. So, but this will be included in the design.
Questions? Any questions from board members? You said you've received the bids?
Yes. You will receive a, at the next meeting, you will receive the evaluation criteria as well as the results of the scoring.
Any reason we didn't get it this meeting?
Excuse me?
Any reason we didn't get it this meeting?
Because it was part of, this is part of the conversation and discussion and not part of the awards, so we didn't want to.
Okay. Great, thank you. Anything else, board members? Thank you, sir. 8.02, school board advisory committee appointments. Any discussion from board members about the school board advisory committees and those who have seeking appointment to those committees?
I would just like to thank the members that actually applied. I think we always need community involvement, and I really appreciate those who stand up and throw their hat in the ring to be a part of a committee with the school system, so I wanted to thank those people.
I would reiterate the same, make the same comment with, for SEAC. I was very pleased to see that three of our citizens have applied for membership on the committee, which is very much in need of additional parental support, so I was very pleased to see that.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a process question. So, at our next meeting, we will vote to appoint the applicants to these three committees, at which point they are then notified, and then brought on to the next, so, thank you. Ms. Serza's nodding her head. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, it's my understanding. If you are watching on TV or on the World Wide Web and you're interested in one of these committees, please feel free to come forward and we'll see if we can fill some more vacancies on these committees because these provide a good service to the school board. Takes us 9.1, WHRO. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We're pleased this evening to bring you an update on WHRO's educational services, and I'd like to welcome Mr. Smith, President and Chief Executive of WHRO, to present this evening. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Heron, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Birch Smith, I'm the President and CEO of WHRO, and with me is my Vice President for Education, Brian Callahan. So, if you have the hard questions, I've got backup. What I'm going to go through today is an impact statement that we provided each of you, it looks like this document, I believe you all have hard copies in front of you. As you, I hope know, you're one of the 19 school divisions that actually owns WHRO. You make an investment each year of $2 per student, and in return, we provide you with a whole host of services. I'm going to highlight just some of those services that are in this 20-page report, not going to go through it all, but just some of the highlights here, so you know what you're getting. I come to you every other year with this report, and of course, I'll take any questions you may have. So, looking in the report, the page 1 of 22 just identifies some of the leadership here in the division. Of course, Dr. Beers is your representative that comes to the ownership meetings. Dr. Constantino was the superintendent, of course, I've had a chance to sit down with Dr. Heron just a couple of weeks ago to start that relationship and go over these services. Brian Landers was volunteered to be the new Vice Chair of the Technology Advisory Council. Brian, thank you very much. And we've worked closely with Tina and others on your team. It's a great partnership we have with representatives from the division. Going to page 2, the Educated Resources and Training. E-Media VA is a statewide digital content repository. This was a service that schools asked for a number of years ago. Schools moved from what used to be desire to learn, our discovery education, to this new free service. We have a contract with the Department of Education, we had a five-year, $2 million contract, we just renewed a contract, they more than doubled their investment into E-Media VA, so we have a lot more resources to provide you training, provide you marketing materials. We have over 161,000 educators with E-Media VA accounts, over 125,000 learning objects, and that can be audio, video, games, apps, lesson plans, really anything you can digitize that teachers can use in the classroom to help move, make that classroom much more interesting. It is free to every one of your teachers, it's free statewide to every public, private, and homeschooler in the Commonwealth. And as I mentioned, we have more money, so we've got dedicated staff that can do training. We have not yet brought staff here to do specific training for the division, we have that dedicated staff. Just pick up the phone, give me a call, we can get that staff training done for the appropriate people. E-Media VA has become a very part, a core part of digital education in the Commonwealth. Item number 2, special topic forums. We host a number of forums for your educators, especially about educational technology and how they best use that in the classroom. We do teacher training. Item number 3, our Teacher Line Service offers graduate credit and recertification. Item number 5, we have now gotten into the workforce development space in a very significant way. We have a web portal called Skills Online. We offer over 4,000 courses in 18 different industry sectors. I expect a year from now, I will be telling you that we also will have a GED program in the service. And we have created the first five of what we hope to be, will be 24 Workplace Readiness Modules, you know, the skills that you need to be a quality employee. And we've identified here as applied math, internet use and safety, locating information, reading for information, and understanding health, wellness, and safety. And all of our schools get a 10% discount on all of the courses that we offer. The Workplace Readiness Modules, though, are free to everybody within the Commonwealth. Going to skip a little bit now to page 4, Student Services. WHRO has provided to you 24 online courses. You can see the list in the second paragraph. Algebra, Algebra II, Astronomy, Biology, Chemistry, Earth Science, Economics and Personal Finance, English 9, 10, 11, and 12, Geometry, Health PE 9 and 10, Math Analysis, Oceanography, Physics, US History, US and Virginia Government, World Geography, and World History 1 and 2. And this past year, we added two more courses, French and Psychology. We also significantly revised a number of courses, Virginia and US History, Virginia and US Government, and English 9 and English 11. We also created another module, this is basically like a chapter of a full course, focused on digital citizenship. This module is meant for middle school students and helps teachers have curriculum to teach students how to be appropriate online. And whether that's just, you know, all the issues that children face when they're online, etiquette, as well as the dangers of being online. This is now a full course. You have this course, you can use them however you see fit. You're familiar with Virtual Virginia, I suspect. Virtual Virginia is the state's Advanced Placement and World Language Program, and they added core curriculum last year. WHRO has operated Virtual Virginia from the beginning. We've just entered into a new five-year contract with the Department of Education, and they are now using 13 of our core curriculum courses, the courses I just mentioned to you. Virtual Virginia now has a full-time program, that's a new thing. And this is an important piece because, as you know, there's legislation that's been banned about HB 8, now HB 1400, that is trying to have, when students take an online course, that your ADM goes out of the division and to the commercial vendor. Virtual Virginia allows you to keep that money, that ADM, within the division. In fact, it allows homeschoolers to sign up through the division, they may never walk in the building, but you will get ADM credit for those homeschoolers as well. Something to think about strategically for the division. Lots of schools in our area are taking advantage of the Virtual Virginia full-time program for their homeschool population in particular. It's a great resource for homeschoolers. Moving on to page 5, some of the additional services we offer. Item number 2, we have a writers' contest for children K-5. They write their own stories, they illustrate their own stories, they get judged. You can see in the 5th grade, in the 5th grade category, Grace Pitts from Stonehouse Elementary, she got second place. We take the winners, we actually animate them, we make a TV show out of it. So, these children get to see their stories that they drew, and they come to life, and they're animated, and they're amazed by their little stories that go on to a TV show. So, we have a lot of fun with that. We host the Regional Spelling Bee. Winner of that goes on to the Nationals. You can see you had school champions, this is a middle school competition, Berkeley, Hornsby, and Tuane Middle Schools were in the competition this year. We had over 60 middle school champions throughout the region that competed. And then the Great Computer Challenge, which has been going on for over 30 years, maybe some of you were involved back in your day. This is a contest of teams of students all the way from kindergarten to 12th grade. We have junior and senior divisions, and they compete in various software languages. And you can see the participants from the division that participated this past year. We do a lot of local education videos. For the last few years, you saw Dr. Constantino on my air with a focusing on your manufacturing day, that was the highlight. We have, of course, suspended that video, and when you've made a decision on a new superintendent, we will be back up here to make a star out of whoever you decide to hire. So, we're excited about doing that. We have made a few new courses, these are different from our online courses I've talked about, but we've made some video courses. So, back in 1961, when we were founded, we would put a teacher in front of a camera and teach class, and you'd watch it live on TV. Well, today, everything's on the internet, but our teachers said we would still love to have a great teacher that would teach a topic that we could play in the classroom and it could be used if the teachers maybe not quite up to speed with the course, or the parents want to watch the lecture, or a child wants to hear a different point, a different teacher. So, we've done algebra. We have literally every single topic of algebra, it's an E-Media VA. We're also, we're in the middle of geometry as we speak. They have, I just saw them yesterday, we are, yeah, literally halfway through, so we're ahead of where the classes right now. So, you basically have, these are video courses. This is a teacher, you play the video, the teacher talks, whiteboard technology, and teaches algebra. So, if you have a snow day or a hurricane day, you can go, let's not, hope that's not going to happen, but, but they could, as long as you've got power, you could go online and see the lecture for that day. So, lots of ways to use these courses. And when we last met with the superintendents, the request was for Earth Science, so that may be coming down the road, we'll see how that shakes out. Speaking of video, we've been working closely with the Williamsburg Health Foundation, and we're going to do a little show and tell since Ms. Cook is with you today. We have created, you all recall the days of Schoolhouse Rock, where you, music and video. Well, we've worked with the Health Foundation to create, I won't do the great service, but for early childhood students, our youngest children, videos, Schoolhouse Rock-type videos on a variety of health topics. What I want to show you is entitled "Cut the Sugar," and this actually won a national telly award, the highest level you can get for production. I'm going to ask you to play the video.
Wait, wait, we've got to get there first, so don't.
Turn our screen on.
Cut the sugar, cut, cut the sugar, sugar. Cut the sugar, cut, cut the sugar. In the morning, there's so many things to remember. What to pack and which shoes I will put on my feet. But while I'm choosing, I have got to think of my body and make some healthy choices with what I'm gonna eat. I grab my own drink, but I'm being sure it's 100%. I stay away from all the artificial colors and flavors. Pathy can be simple and delicious as well. I eat good things now, so I will feel better later. I can cut the sugar, and it's easy to do, yeah. I can cut the junk and eat wholesome foods. I can cut the sugar, and it's easy to do, yeah. I can cut the junk and eat wholesome foods. I'm turning down the sports drinks, leaving soda behind, because looking at the label answered all of my questions. I stay away from things with too much sugar inside, and I keep my eyes on the serving size, good health is my prize. I can cut the sugar, and it's easy to do, yeah. I can cut the junk and eat wholesome foods. I can cut the sugar, and it's easy to do, yeah. I can cut the junk and eat wholesome foods. If you like a snack for dipping and crunching, go ahead and grab some carrots for munching. Looking for a sweet treat to hold you over, have a bowl of yogurt with berries and granola. If snacking on the go is what you're craving, mix up a bag of almonds and raisins. Do you want to take a bite from a tiny tree? How about a tasty bowl of broccoli? Pathy can be simple and delicious as well. I eat good things now, so I will feel better later. I can cut the sugar, and it's easy to do, yeah. I can cut the junk and eat wholesome foods.
Thanks to the Williamsburg Health Foundation. We were able to work with local artists, local musicians, local folks to create these. We created eight of these videos, we've offered them, of course, within the division, but all the other school divisions. And we've also offered those to public television stations around the country as well.
Couldn't get Mrs. Cook a cameo in one of those?
Talk about the next, yeah, maybe the next project. Actually, the next project we're working on, we've entered into an agreement with the Williamsburg Health Foundation, it's focused on middle schools. We're going to do 360 interactive video addressing substance abuse issues for middle schoolers. So, that's going to be an interesting project, alcohol, drugs, and those kind of things, in a way that is not just roll your eyes, you know, middle schools can be tough to get them to engage, but we're excited about the project and lots of conversations where we're going there. So, perhaps next year, I can show you that. Items pages 7 and 8 and 9 are our early learner services. I'm not going to go through all of this, but on page 9, it summarizes, we have a Raising Reader's Library Corner at Norwich Elementary. We also had a literacy event, including a visit from our literacy van that was at the elementary school, and we gave out 100 first books and 500 fun books. I should also mention, we also have a STEM van now, so folks, we can come up and do STEM-related activities, a lot of maker space-type work for kids. So, that's a fairly new van. And finally, on page 10 is your ROI, as school board members, you certainly care about this. You can see your investment in WHRO of $28,000 returned last year, and a savings and value of over $1,300,000, a 48-to-1 return on your investment. I hope you like that ROI, and I'm happy to take any questions. Any questions from board members or comments?
Hi.
Ms. Minor?
First, let me say this has been a wonderful partnership for a long time between the school division and WHRO, back in the days when you brought the internet into the schools before we all knew the impact of it. But the virtual classrooms and the opportunities for our youngsters to exceed and take more is just wonderful, and also, all those teacher resources are phenomenal, but I have to say for the community, for us to invest a dollar and have a $48 return is quite awesome. So, thank you for all that you do for us.
Thank you. Tummel?
This is just a question about the algebra. I think this is great. Is it sort of like Khan Academy where if someone, if a student has a problem with a particular part of algebra, it's something they could go to?
Go back, it's a different teacher presenting it maybe a little different way.
Right.
A parent could sit down, you know, how many of us remember algebra? I remember we're making these. But you could sit down with your kid and they could watch, you could watch as a parent the lesson, see, and then maybe work with your child on the lesson of the topic of the day. Teachers are using it to just get a sense of how best to teach the next day's topic. You can use a variety of ways, but it's literally every single topic in a video. I served on the Governor's Virtual Learning Advisory Committee, and that came up one day, wouldn't it be nice if we just simply had, and I said, well, we can do that, and so we made that. Our algebra full-blown online course is much more interactive, a lot of technology, that's different, a different purpose, but this is great for, again, if a child's sick for a period of time, they can take the classes that way.
So, for any of the parents that might be listening tonight, how would they go about accessing?
Well, there's a few ways. We actually have a, and Brian can help me with this, but we have a Word document that lists literally the URL for every single topic, and that's available in E-Media VA. So, you can simply go to emediaVA.org.
What, what was that?
E-Media VA, that's our.
E-Media, okay.
Yeah, it's all one word, E-Media VA. That's the digital repository I talked about at the top of the conversation, and right on the homepage, both algebra and geometry are there. So, you don't even have to sign in, you can go right there, you can down, you can take the Word document, or you can go straight to the topic you want, whatever, and there's searchability features in that. and there's searchability features in that. So, it's very easy for any teacher, parents, student to get access to it.
And is that link something that the math teachers, every algebra teacher at WJCC just knows that there's this eMedia Virginia link?
As well, that's one of the reasons I come and report this, so hopefully, the word gets spread from the powers that be down. We tend to communicate at school board level, superintendent level, cabinet level folks, and frankly, we rely on leadership to get the word out throughout the rest of the divisions. We don't have as much, we do a lot, you know, you can sign up, and you can get emails from us that will highlight those kind of things, but we do rely on divisions to get the word out. And frankly, this division's been very good about getting the word out for a long time. So, I can't speak to whatever teacher knows, but it's certainly out there, and hopefully, things like this will get the word out.
Any other, Ms. Cook?
I just want to thank you for coming and giving this presentation. WHRO is a great partner in the community, and it's one of the best public media corporations in the nation.
Thank you.
So, we're very lucky to have you here. I just want to thank Dr. Beers for serving on the board and representing this board, and then all the staff, Dr. Heron and Mr. Landers, and then Tina, I'm not going to try to say your last name, I'm sorry, but thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Yeah. Yeah. Bert and I have talked about this before, but I remember when this began just many, many years ago, and it's just, it really exploded, and I just think it's, it really, it just looks to the future, and everything that you guys do. It's.
Thanks a lot to your wife for starting this relationship, so we appreciate that.
Any other comments from board members?
Mr. Schmidt, I'm an engineer, I remember algebra. Calculus?
Very good.
Algebra, I got. I think this is a great resource for our students and our teachers and our staff, and I thank you for providing this service to us and your good discussion every year.
All right. Thank you very much. Take care.
That takes us to nine point zero two, design progress update on the Lafayette High School Auxiliary Gym Design. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Snipes is going to introduce this item, where we're going to get an update on the gym design. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Good evening again. In June twenty sixteen, the Board awarded the architectural design for the Lafayette High School Auxiliary Gym to HBA Architecture. The project includes some architectural services to produce detailed designs. We, the staff, including LHS staff, parents that are here tonight, and some community members who are part of a design team, as well as HBA representatives. And so, tonight, we are here to have the HBA representatives present to you as part of our standard operating procedure to present the auxiliary design.
Good evening. My name is Shaq Hasten. I'm an architect with HBA, and I'm here tonight to give you an overview of where we've been in terms of your project, and just to give you an overview of where we are. And it's been very helpful for me to be in the audience tonight to truly realize how important this project is to the community, and we take this assignment really seriously, and we're very interested in the project. So, the first slide basically shows the site as if it's looking from outer space. At the very top center of the image is the location for the auxiliary gym addition. We think of a project more in terms of just architecture, but also site influence, and in your case, there's some utilities that affect the development of the design, and they're shown in the kind of the dash lines running left to right, and they deal with piping concerns. The other components that we've talked about relate to emergency vehicle access to the gymnasium to make sure it's free and clear for emergency access. And then also, from an engineering standpoint, we're looking at alternatives related to how we deal with stormwater management, which is important on any site where you're creating new roof areas that are not, that are basically impervious, so that we're developing those strategies with the design. And so, getting a little closer to the addition, the addition's roughly forty feet beyond the existing boys' locker room walls. So, it's relatively close to the school. It has a new covered walkway, which is the true physical connection to the addition. Every entrance and exitway has a vestibule, which is really important from an environmental standpoint, so it's this air, air and environmental lock, so cold air does not enter into the gymnasium. Looking closer at the plan, at the center of the addition is a full-size high school basketball court. Supporting the basketball court also within the court area is the option to play volleyball in terms of a standard volleyball court. And also, supporting the activities are men's and women's toilet rooms, custodial areas, a small concessions room, electrical equipment. And then also, we have bleachers that are telescoping, so they can actually fall back to the wall surface with capacity for approximately two hundred visitors. Are there any questions about the work plan?
Could you just tell us a little bit about the storage and the access to that storage space?
Okay. So, in terms of the storage, what's good about it, it has the double doors which access into the gymnasium area, but it also has direct overhead door access to the exterior. And when you don't need that type of access, you can also use the individual, like personnel door, which is directly adjacent to it. And the idea behind the storage area is to support activities that occur within the gym, but also to provide provisions for exterior storage that can be stored within the addition.
Approximately, how much space is that? How many?
From an area standpoint, approximately six hundred square feet.
Thelma?
I appreciate your forward thinking and having doubled the amount of restroom opportunities for the women versus the men. It's always a problem.
It is.
It is.
Are there any other questions about the plan?
I'm not sure where to go from there. Any other comments from board members?
So, are the sewer and stormwater line's going to be a challenge, or is that something with the design we're comfortable with?
Well, we want the solution to be, to lend itself towards a natural solution and not so much an engineering solution. So, right now, the best approach to that is one that's really not noticed. And so, right now, we're at preliminary standpoint, so we still need to come up with the final answer on that. So, the other part to the gymnasium is it does have a hardwood floor, which is also resilient in terms of its floor assemblies, which is really important. And also, it has natural light that's entered into the gymnasium, which is very important in today's environments with translucent glazing, which provides for diffuse light. So.
What about the height? I know that was an issue at some of the gymnasiums for volleyball.
Yeah. Well, we do have basketball goals for one, and they are fully retractable, so that does lend itself to the clear distance. From a bottom of steel dimension, it's roughly twenty-two feet clear to the framing.
Is that, I'm assuming, appropriate, more than appropriate for volleyball?
A minimum clear dimension would be approximately twenty feet, so we're in excess of kind of typical guidelines for clearances for a gym. Yeah.
When you're talking about natural light, is this overhead lighting or lighting at the top of the walls of the gym?
It's like clear story lighting, so it would be up high, but it is natural light, and there are windows. It's just that the glazing that we're using is translucent, so it doesn't provide for direct light, which in this environment can be a problem. So, it's diffuse lighting, natural light. And of course, we do have lighting from our electrical lighting standpoint. So, ideally, for architects, we want to do additions that really look like they're a part of the original building, and you can't really see where the addition was. And that's our goal with your project. So, what we'll do is we'll rely heavily on the existing brick masonry and mortar that will match that. Also, metal panels are also a part of the existing material palette, so we'll pay careful attention to color, materials, in terms of their module, their planning module, so that it looks like it's truly a part of the original school. And once again, we are referencing in the, at least in the two lower elevations, the windows for the translucent glazing, which would run the length of the court. And this basically is a master activity schedule, and so, we're pleased to convey that we're hitting all of our milestones and all of our target dates. As it states here, October fourth is where we are now, so we're a little less than halfway there in terms of the activities, which represents our first board meeting for the preliminary review for the addition. And then, the dates below that represent significant project milestones, which takes us to, at the bottom, September twenty eighteen, when it's ready for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen academic year. Any questions about the activity schedule or any part of the design?
Questions from board members? Ms. Cook?
Just to follow up on Ms. Minor's question about stormwater management, do you anticipate that BMP having, is it going to be a pond, do you think, on the site?
Well, to me, the pond, there's a whole range of solutions in terms of how we deal with it. Not to say that a pond wouldn't be used, but ideally, in a school environment, we'll do whatever we can to come up with alternative solutions that do not incorporate that type of structure on site. Right now, it's preliminary, and our goal is to get, work closely with our engineer, Kimberly Horn, to come up with alternatives that handle it in the best manner, kind of environmentally, but also a smart solution that keeps cost in mind as well. So.
Thank you for your attention to that.
Sure.
Any other comments from board members? Can I take you back to the plan view, or can you take me back to the plan view? So, one more back.
Sure.
Thank you. Actually, be another one back, but the first, one question I have, that's what I'm interested in, construction activities, getting material to the site, keeping our students and our construction activities apart. Do you have a proposed plan for how we're going to get that done?
Yeah. The, it's a good question. We never want the two paths to cross from a safety standpoint, so that's something that we're keeping in mind from day one. So, on this diagram, the dashed yellow line represents land disturbance, but another way of thinking about it is, from a technical standpoint with contractors, is that's their contract limit line. So, access on the slide that's in front of you, kind of on the middle right, is where kind of the access starts, and the land disturbance and activities would all take place within the yellow line. Yeah.
Yeah. I guess I still have some parking lot concerns and workers arriving and students arriving and all of that, so that'll have to be closely managed when we get to that point.
Yeah, and that's a really good point, and we don't leave that up for, we don't leave that as an open-ended question in terms of how we develop the design. So, at the next level of presentation, I think it'd be really appropriate for us to convey the phasing plan and actually pull back a little bit on this view to see how we address those concerns.
Yeah, and then, you know, contractor contract as well, mobilize offsite, everybody comes in on a van and goes to the site, that kind of thing. Soil conditions, I guess we're not driving piles for this, it'll be on spread footers. Do we know what the soil looks like? Have we taken borings?
In terms of the geotechnical?
Geotech, is there anything I don't want to find in the ground?
Right now, in terms of the report, I don't, I believe we do not have the final report, but shallow foundations are anticipated and not deep foundations.
I guess, have we done a phase one? Environmental phase one for this?
That, I don't know that as well. Sorry.
No, that's fine. My day job coming back. The, if you flip through into the plan view where we were before, either any one of them, the storage space there, is that conditioned space?
It would be, yes.
And does that extend all the way to the steel, or is it going to be more of a one-story storage space?
Well, that space would be continuous vertically to the bottom of the deck, the metal deck. Yeah.
Okay. Bleachers common in an auxiliary gym?
I think, you know, with your project, this is really unique because of its role in the community. So, in terms of how the addition is, how it's been developed in terms of its use, I think it's really appropriate in this case that bleachers are a part based on the community use.
Okay. Community use. And it's for the student practices, are we looking at having games in the auxiliary gym? No?
That.
Concessions.
Mr. Snipes?
During the design process, the design team discussed how the auxiliary gym could be used after hours and if it would be used after hours. It would allow the community to use that facility without having access to the main part of the building. So, one of the issues there was to have bleachers for not only community use, but I think Mr. Lynn talked about wrestling tournaments and things that you would need for that, so.
Okay, because the other auxiliary gyms we have don't have bleachers in them, right?
You are correct.
Or concessions?
You are correct.
Okay, you answered my construction timeline. Do you really think it's going to take July seventeen to September of eighteen for this thing?
I'm sorry?
Do you think it's going to take over a year to build the auxiliary gym?
Well, you know, it states that the, let me go back to the, there's a lot of kind of in-between activities that occur between the milestone dates. So, July of twenty seventeen is when the contractor would mobilize, and September of twenty eighteen basically represents truly the finish line, but if you back up another at least forty-five days, and better yet, even sixty days, that would be considered to be the contractor's substantial completion date. So, September twenty eighteen represents operational in terms of the school division, not necessarily at the end of construction, because there is that transition period, which would be forty-five to sixty days prior to September of twenty eighteen.
I just want to make sure that when we, when we actually go out to bid this, I mean, September eighteen is obviously when we quote-unquote "have" to have it for the start of the school year, but, you know, if the contractor can get it done by April of eighteen, we'll take it. So, I just want to make sure that when we go out to bid this, that we don't, it doesn't fill the vacuum in which it's created.
Exactly. And more detail with respect to the activity schedule also may be another next step in terms of what's conveyed to the board to give you more detail about those in-between activities, but the contract date certainly wouldn't be September twenty eighteen, that just represents occupancy and how you operate. Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have. Any other board members have questions? Thank you, Mr. Hasten, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That takes us to nine point zero three, annual review of twenty sixteen SOL performance. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Tonight, Mr. Thorpe will present a general overview of WJCC's SOL performance, and the intent is to... And the intent is to present the data and give you some peer comparisons and regional comparisons. Therefore, this evening, we'll not be addressing specifically how we respond to some of the gaps that you'll see in our academic data. However, starting next month, we're introducing a monthly series at school board work sessions to specifically discuss in more depth how we are addressing equity and the academic achievement of subgroups. In this series, we'll provide, we'll be providing information about supports and programs that are in place to serve the needs of all students. And that's coming at next board meeting, or next, next month, sorry. Mr. Thorpe?
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Heron. We are very pleased to share with you WJCC's SOL performance results for the 2015-2016 school year. And we are even more pleased to share, again, that our school division is one of 53 in the Commonwealth of Virginia to have all of its schools fully accredited. We are continuing to benchmark our outcomes with school divisions in the Commonwealth with whom we share similar demographics, enrollments, and operating budgets. These school divisions are Augusta County, Bedford County, Fauquere County, Frederick County, and Rockingham County. Additionally, we also benchmark with the following neighboring school divisions: Hampton, Newport News, Pecosin, and York County. Please note the differences in operating budgets, demographics, and enrollments between our school division and our Region 2 neighbors. Our rate of students with free and reduced meals went from 30% during last year's reporting cycle to 33% now. The SOL results for both the like-school and Region 2 divisions by subgroup are available in the two infographics at your workstation. Accreditation in the Commonwealth of Virginia remains the same with respect to targets. We continue to have the following performance pass rate targets for the SOLs. Reading, that's average of 75%, and math, social studies, and science continues to be 70%. And we are now going to share our SOL pass rates by subgroup for 2015-2016. With our slides, you can see a three-year trend in overall school division pass rates by subgroup. Subgroups that we monitor from left to right include all students, African-American, Hispanic, white, Asian, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and limited English proficient. Our pass rate for 2016 is in green, and immediately to the right of the green, we've also added a yellow bar to show Virginia's average pass rate for each content and subgroup. So in the area of reading, our pass rates for this year were within a point or two from pass rates from last year. Our pass rates for African-Americans in reading increased by 4%, though, and our pass rates for students with disabilities in reading also increased 2% in 2016 from 2015. Our 2016 pass rates in reading were better than all of our like-school divisions in the following groups: African-American, students with disabilities, white, Hispanic, and all students.
Can you go back? I was trying to slow you down a little bit. Board members, see the graphic, and are we, are we good with moving on? I just want to make sure that we're all, have time to digest. There's a lot of information on these slides, I just want to make sure that we...
Can I ask a question before we go on? B, are all the students represented in multiple ways? So, for example, if you have a Hispanic student with disabilities, that's economically disabled and is in the learning a second language, are they actually represented four different times?
There are students who can be in multiple subgroups, yes.
And then, one other thing for the economically disadvantaged, is the criteria for that, whether they qualify for free and reduced lunch, or free lunch?
Free or reduced lunch or meals?
Free and reduced lunch, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I will go slower.
Just, that's fine. It would be interesting to just note the populations in each of these, each of these categories, just for...
Numbers?
Yes, raw numbers.
Yeah, I'm a numbers guy, I get it.
I like raw numbers.
Yeah.
On the, yes, absolutely. We can get that information to you. Okay.
All right, Mr. Thorpe, you can move on.
With writing, "Our school division's pass rates were relatively consistent from 2015 to 2016. We did note a drop in the performance of students in the limited English proficiency subgroup." And so, speaking to your last question, Mr. Chairman, some factors to consider when looking at our school division's overall performance from last year to this year, there are some increases. I don't have the raw numbers, but I can bring them to you. But just in test takers, we had 31 more African-American test takers in 2016 than 2015, 45 more students in the economically disadvantaged subgroup this past year, 18 more students in the students with disabilities subgroup in 2016 than 2015. But again, given that, I will make sure to get those raw numbers for you.
Yeah, it's helpful, the context of, is that a...
Absolutely.
100% increase, 10% increase, 1% increase? Just, so the limited English proficiency, have you had a chance to digest what the genesis of those, of that changes?
I know, that's actually something we're looking forward to addressing in our equity series. I don't want to steal the thunder of our presenter for that, but we are, we have noted that, and there are things that we're doing to address that.
Are we ready to move on from writing? Thank you.
In mathematics, our pass rates were mostly consistent to last year's pass rates, and while our pass rates in each subgroup surpassed the state average, our performance dropped slightly from 2015-2016, 2015 to 2016 in the economically disadvantaged and Hispanic subgroups.
Go ahead, Dr. Beers.
I guess I suppose, I have a more general kind of question. I'm trying to understand, well, first of all, how long, for how many years have we used these benchmarked school districts?
I'm aware of us beginning to use them last year. We check the data every couple of years. We've been benchmarking for many years. I believe the group of counties with whom we're benchmarking for the like-school divisions, that began last school year.
You know, I'm just curious why, Pecosin is such a small school system, why we're even comparing ourselves with Pecosin?
That was the Region 2.
Region 2.
Yeah, Region 2, and then you have...
No, I know, I understand, it's just that...
We also note those differences.
I guess we're not concerned about it. I'm not being compared with comparable communities and comparable school districts, that, I see a couple of them there. Bedford, I could see Rockingham because it's right near James Madison, Fauquere, Frederick. I'm just, I guess I, I suppose I'd like to know how that was, you know, was it just basically numbers? They have, you know, this percentage of free and reduced lunch, they have this percentage. Is that how that was done?
That's right. We used analytic tools to look at all of the school divisions and the Commonwealth, and given our operating budget, and our demographics, and our enrollment, we tried to find school divisions that were most like ours.
They have similar index numbers from the state?
That's right.
They did, okay. So, so we're also obviously comparing income level of, you know, people that live in, or the ability to pay, I guess that's what we're talking about. Is that what you're saying? That we're doing that?
Do you mean local composite index?
I think that's...
Do you mean local composite index?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not aware that we're considering that.
To me, that would say something about the nature of the community, and its ability to pay, income level, educational level, whatever it might be. I'm just curious about that.
Dr. Beers, I believe we are considering that piece of the puzzle as part of our choosing of our...
You did.
Systems, absolutely.
Okay.
The local composite indexed.
And Jim, make sure you're in the microphone there.
Microphone's down.
Sorry. Okay. Yeah, I was just, I wanted, I was curious about that, and I hadn't heard, so we are in, we are actually using the composite index as well?
Absolutely. That's one of the things that we use to pull out the systems that are most like us.
Like ours, okay, okay.
Ms. Cook?
And following up on Dr. Beers' question, last year, I believe, I asked about the tax rate, and I think the percentage of the locality's budget that went to education, and I think Ms. Berta, you provided that information to me, so if maybe...
Hopeful.
Yeah, that you could provide that as well, that would be...
The other, the other question, are these, are these comparable districts that we're doing comparison fully accredited?
I asked, no.
No.
Well, they may be this year, but they weren't last year.
They are not all fully accredited, no.
Is the population similar to ours?
We have the demographic...
I mean, the number of students.
Yeah, that's in the...
Yeah, they are.
Okay.
Full membership, right.
I missed that. Thank you very much.
Like, like Dr. Beers, I'm glad that we're using the composite index, but like Dr. Beers, the level of educational attainment in the community, and the fact that there's a university in the community, and the relative median income in the community should, as we all know, unfortunately, has an impact on the quality of the educational experience for those youngsters and their attainment. And I wanted to make sure that we're doing more of an apples-to-apples comparison. The composite index is a good way to tell, but I think Ms. Cook's questions get to some of that other issue.
Thank you. Yeah, there's all kinds of ways to digest the data, you know, other, board members have different ways, I prefer the year-over-year, how are we progressing or not progressing?
Right, right.
And think that's...
For us, that's the most important.
So, for mathematics, what actual SOLs go into that number?
So, any, we've got math in our middle grades and elementary, and then we've got algebra, we've got geometry.
Yeah, so it's, so we're talking the entire school system, any mathematics SOL gets boiled down to, to this chart here that we're looking at in front of us?
I want to make sure to give you accurate information. I'll make sure to get that information to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that it was all, not just third-grade math or fifth-grade...
Oh, no, this includes, this includes elementary, middle, and high.
Okay.
Did, did the SOL test change from last year in any major way in design, or...
Yes, thank you. We actually, in 2015, we were piloting the computer adaptive tests in mathematics in sixth grade. And so, this past year, in third grade and seventh and eighth grade, we had computer adaptive testing as well. And so, that's a different, the level of questions were altered based on the student's previous response, whether it was correct or incorrect. And that provided, that was different than in the past.
Do you think that might explain for some of the decreases that we've seen?
Perhaps. We don't have enough trend data to make that conclusion.
I, you know, since I have so much numbers here, it's just hard to, we're just asking questions about that. Is there, can we get a ranking of those 53 school divisions, you know, in terms of what their scores were? And, because I'd be curious about that. And even, even the ranking of our, you know, the districts that we were comparing ourselves with, in terms of how many numbers of schools are credited, that sort of thing. I'd be interested in that. But I'd like to see where we are in that 53.
That would be great, certainly.
I'm, Dr. Beers, what ranking are you talking about?
That, well, I mean, if we, you know, the, the, two of them, the subgroups, the, I'm sorry, not the subgroups, the, the Region 2 schools?
Yeah.
And the...
Did I, did I hear you ask that you wanted a ranking of all of the 53 school divisions in the Commonwealth that are fully accredited?
Because what we have here are, you know, like, individual, they're like, average scores in each one of the subject areas. I'd like to see, do we do better overall in reading than Pecosin, or, you know, that's all.
Yeah, that's, there's a lot of, a lot of that, kind of, here. If you look at the all, Pecosin will be the light blue, and we're the red dot, red square. So we're a little bit less than Pecosin in reading, at 84%. You just look at the first, look at the first.
In one year.
But this is, this is the average of all math scores.
Yeah, and math, and reading and writing.
So that's what, yeah, okay. Yeah, that, I'm not as interested in that as I am...
I'm curious where we fall with the 53 other fully accredited schools. I think that's, that's, and I agree with Mr. Kelly that we need to know how we're doing, which is a great thing, but as we, as we look at our peers that are in that cohort of 53 that are fully accredited, what are they doing? Are they doing some things better, or better with subgroups than we are, and is it an opportunity for us to learn? That is really why I would be interested in that. So if they're doing really well with the limited English proficiency, or if they're doing better with, you know, Hispanics, or if they're doing better with kids with disability, it'd be great to have an idea of who they are, and maybe see what, I know that we're working hard, but are there some working less hard and smarter and getting better results? I guess is what I'm looking for, for all of us, and most of all, for the students that we want to bring forward. So I think that that would be sort of helpful.
We'd be happy to provide that to you.
Yeah, because, and the challenge is, in reality, is the accreditation really is based on the 75, the 70, the 70. It really doesn't talk to how they're doing in their subgroup reporting. And so I'd like to know if we're doing, we're doing a better, I think the community would like to know that we're doing a better job in those subgroups than some others, and even our, and our scores are great, but the accreditation standard doesn't say that we're doing, you know, we're doing a better job overall because our scores are that much higher than the minimum for accreditation.
That's great. We'd be happy to compile that information.
I have to say, it was probably the only thing I liked about No Child Left Behind is that we didn't say it was okay not to do well with 30% of our kids. I just, lots of other problems with that bill, but saying 30% was okay to leave behind was just not a way I wanted a school board to operate.
Well, I think the other thing, too, is, I, I think the state has really kind of set the bar, it's not terribly high.
Right.
Accreditation score in math, 70%, science, anywhere near where I was, that was pretty close to a D. So I, I'm, what I like is, I like our, you know, we have a lot of scores that are much, much higher than that, and of course, we have scores that are, that are lower than that. No, I'm, I'm noting the progression in the, in...
You didn't think this was going to be easy, did you?
Oh, no, this is, this is great. Actually, I think that that's fascinating information. When we, when we get the information about the, all of the 53 divisions, we'll just need to keep in mind the great differences in these school divisions across a variety of factors. Great, so we will move on to history and social sciences, and, again, our pass rates were, were mostly consistent to last year's. Our performance did drop slightly from 2015 to 2016 in the Hispanic subgroup.
How many tests does this represent, SOLs? I don't know how many, but it's, you know...
Again, this is, this is from grades four through high school. In the area of science, WJCC's pass rate performance was equal or better than like-school divisions in the all-students category, and our school division's performance was very similar to last year. We did see, we did see a drop in our limited English proficient category, and a slight drop also in economically disadvantaged.
That LEP numbers are kind of 40, 66...
That LEP numbers are kind of 40, 66, 55, there's a lot of variability in, in that. But if it's a small population, I can completely understand that more. So, it's just interesting data at the moment. Yes.
Okay, so when I look at this, I look at either we're staying the same or decreasing in every single category. So, I don't see this as a, a positive thing.
No, no. I, I know that our, our science department, working, working very hard to try to break down this information, seeing if there's common trends with skills in which students were most commonly deficient, and then help to create some goals around that. So, given your, given your very, your very good questions and your request for additional information, just wanted to say again, our schools are really continuing to focus on what's best for, for all students and for each child. Accountability is important, but our school division is beyond just a singular focus on SOLs, and we're proud of the tradition of, of high achievement. We recognize that there's more to do and we embrace the challenges of continuous improvement.
Do we still get information about the passing, who passed proficient, who passed at an advanced level, who passed, well, who didn't pass, I guess is the other level? So, we, we could have a, an idea of where we, we're really functioning?
Sure, by performance band?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That would be helpful. And thank, thank you for doing the report. It's good that our schools are all fully accredited. I know that everyone worked really hard across all the subgroups and in all the challenges they face. It's a good thing, and it's hard to do. And the other challenge is that this is never the same cohort of youngsters that we're testing year to year. So, that's, that's the other piece of challenge for the.
Another huge factor.
Yeah, that's the other challenge for us all. But thank you for doing that, and I'm excited about the opportunity, or maybe not my opportunity, to talk about achievement at a work session. That'd be, I'm looking forward to that.
Mr. Thorpe, can, talking about limited English proficiency, what, what are the main languages that our, our teachers are addressing?
It's, it's mostly, it's mostly Spanish, but again, in order to qualify as a student for, that receives LEP services, she or he, the student, would need to qualify through the access test. And if they meet, if they were under a cut score showing that they had needs with acquiring language, then depending on that level of that need, then the, the services would, would dictate that. I don't have any specific data about the percentages of the home native languages for our LEP population, but I, but I can make an inquiry about that.
I would really be interested because it would be interesting to, to note, do, do we have any immersion classrooms in the, in the school district? I'm not aware of any, but have I missed that?
At this current time, we don't have any immersion classes. However, one of our sessions in our equity series will focus very much on, on students with English as a second language, and we'll bring some of the data broken down and the levels of English and, English and the number of languages and the increasing number of students. We'll be bringing some of you, some more of that data in detail to you to put it in context, and then talking about some of the services that we're providing and support systems to assist students in being successful. So, we're going to take pieces of the puzzle and bring them to you over the next six months and actually delve into it in a little bit more detail so we can fully understand where our gaps are and be very transparent about them and how we're beginning to address them.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Thank you, Mr. Thorpe.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Thorpe, appreciate it. And congratulations to everyone that were fully accredited. I'd like to follow up on what Dr. Beers said about the bar that the state sets. I've noticed with interest that three years ago, I think we were one of 22 divisions, and then last year, one of 30 something, and then this year, one of 55. So, you know, and this is one measure. It's, it's not what we're looking at, and it's, it's, and it's, so it doesn't tell us everything. But I am more interested in benchmarking against ourselves on this measure to make sure that we are. But it's a moving target. The number of SOLs changes year by year based on the General Assembly's whims and, and then, and then, then the, the tests that change. So, it's, it's an imperfect measure. But one of the things I find interesting about this is that when we look at our fall membership versus the number of schools, whether we're looking at Region Two or like school divisions, you know, we are putting, on average, more kids into schools. And that would suggest that maybe our per pupil spending might be a little higher because we're putting it more in the classroom. And that doesn't necessarily bear out either. There are several divisions that we're, that are here that spend more than we do per student. So, it's just an interesting way to look at how we perform overall compared to others, but then also what other communities are investing. And I, I always like to be able to compare ourselves on a bunch of measures. So, I know we're firing a lot of questions at you, but appreciate so that we can have, we can make.
Very responsible questions.
That budget document is a policy document in and of itself, and so it helps inform our thinking on that, so.
It really is interesting to look at the number of schools based on population in, in both Region Two and our comparative groups. So, you know, Rockingham has 23 schools for their 11,000 students.
Right.
And we have 15.
Right, and we're growing, and a lot of, I would guess that several of these divisions are not. I'm, you know, I don't know. I suspect not.
Mrs. Hummel?
Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. I also would like to say that to, what I'm seeing is a continual growth in students that are struggling because of poverty, because of English as a second language. I'm seeing those numbers increasing as a percentage. And so, I know that it gets more and more difficult every year when you're trying to show progress, but at the same time, your populations are increasing in the areas that, for the students who, who need the most help. I know when I moved here in 2003, I think we were at 26 percent free and reduced lunch, and now we're at, what, 33? So, it is just something I think the community needs to keep in mind as well, that this is, this is a population that needs attention and needs our support.
Requires our teachers to be very creative and to know exactly what each student needs in order to be successful, and that's what we're committed to doing.
Is there, is there a mobility issue, too, with our student population that we start out with a cohort in September? We spend a lot of time getting them ready for the SOLs, but we're testing a 20 or 30 percent different group of people.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions? I think everything I need, I had was covered. Data is great, but now we have to have actions on it, too, so. Thank you, it's important. Thank you. That brings us to 10.01, personnel actions. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda as, actions as presented tonight?
Mr. Chair, I move the acceptance of personal actions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is any discussion? Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. That brings us to 11.01, board members' comments. Are any comments from board members this evening?
Of course.
Mrs. Hummel?
I had the pleasure this week of meeting with Mr. Snipes and getting a very nice tour of the transportation and child health area. Just a wonderful opportunity for me to see the operations side of the WJCC school system. I appreciated his time in sitting down with me and talking to me about some of the transportation challenges, and I enjoyed meeting his staff. I, it, it did bring up to me a desire for us to be creative with our transportation, particularly as it relates to New Horizons. We, in my mind, don't send enough of our students to take advantage of the opportunities that are at New Horizons. We're, I would like to see if we could increase that percentage, and I know it's a challenge with transportation. So, that's just one of the things I would like to, the board to look at next year. Another creative solution would be trying to do something for the LHS parents as far, and actually, the athletes regarding shuttle service, regardless of where the CIP places the walkway. We've got an issue with safety for our student athletes at Lafayette High School. And I think we need to be very creative in what we can do now, not next year or the year after, in seeing that we can create a safe environment for our students to get to their practice fields. So, I look forward to whatever creative suggestions on that end from administration. So, that's it.
Ms. Young?
Okay. Mr. Chair.
No, got Ms. Young right now, sorry.
You were pointing to me, I'm sorry.
I know our names sounds alike. Okay. One of the things, Mr. Chair, I'd like to have put on the next work, work session agenda. Many of us have expressed interest in late start for high school students, and I would like to begin a discussion on that. And I know Fairfax County has been able to implement late start for their high school students, and I would really like us to begin looking at that possibility. Secondly, I had the opportunity of going to back-to-school night at Claret Bird Baker. Ms. Hummel, Mr. Hurley told me that I needed to be harder on you. But he, he said hello. But every one of the open, the back-to-school nights at DJ Monique, Matoka, and Claret Bird Baker were, you could see the enthusiasm of parents and the excitement of kids. It was, it was really informative, and I want to congratulate those schools. Those were the only ones I had time to attend. And then also today, the ribbon cutting at James River Elementary, walking through that beautiful wooded area that opened, that new outdoor classroom was, was wonderful, and I appreciate the, the community's involvement in that and want to thank them. So, thank you.
Ms. Minor?
Let me also comment on the James River Elementary School reopening their outdoor classroom. It was a wonderful example of collaboration by county and school folks and PTA and local businesses to accomplish that. So, I enjoyed it. The students are going to have a wonderful time. We discussed briefly having board meetings there, but we couldn't figure out how to get Ronnie to livestream it, so we thought maybe not. But thank you for that. Friday is Manufacturing Day for our schools, and I'm excited about the opportunity to see some of the local businesses and have our students visit and see what they have to say when we meet with them at lunch. I also appreciate the Lafayette folks for staying on the subject of Lafayette and the athletic needs. The pathway through the woods is a challenge, and it's really unsafe, and that's very clear. So, if we can resolve a shuttle in the short term and find some better solution in the long term, that would be wonderful. That would be wonderful. So, I appreciate you staying the course. We'll be discussing the CIP at our next meeting, I think, for adoption. And then it'll be going on to the Board of Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, and you all are familiar with how that goes. So, thank you for staying the course on that. I think it's another example of parents working with the schools and the county to accomplish good things for our students, just like the James River pathway was. So, stay the course. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
I would like to thank all our presenters that came before us today with so much great information, and also thank you to everyone who commented on the CIP. Your input is very invaluable, and I agree with my fellow board members that the time to act is now for Lafayette. We're overdue for, for sure, and it's a safety concern for us. And my favorite part of the evening was definitely the catchy tune we heard about cutting the sugar. I don't know about you guys.
Dr. Beers? Yeah, I, I, I agree with all, all the board members that have talked about Lafayette. I think the primary concern issue really has to be, always has to be, the safety of our students. It may be that there are other more, actually safer ways of getting our students over there than walking a path. So, I, I, whatever resources we have available, I think, I like the idea of, of just coming up with a variety of options and see, and see what works. And I just think it's too, I think it's too important. I also was just amazed at, to see the outdoor classroom down at James River School slash, I called it a nature trail. But one of the things that, that I realized, there was, there was a lot of discussion about science and math, and I was looking around at pristine environment with benches and hanging trees, and it's like, oh, no, these are also great locations for reading and writing and, and, and talking about things you read and write. So, I, not to diminish the importance of science and math, but let's bring the reading and writing outside, too. I, I, I would fully support that. And one other thing, too, I, I know Bert Schmidt brought a lot of information with him when he came up, but we, we do, we have an incredible resource at WHRO. They, you know, they, aside from all the things that we probably listen to or watch on a regular basis, the, the impact, the, the, all the work that they have done on, on school districts all across, not just the, the district, but around the country, because they've, they've been recognized for, I mean, this is cutting-edge stuff, and I, I, I just think it's, it's forward-thinking, and that's the direction we have to go in. And that's it.
Good. Ms. Cook?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that James City County is in the final stages of their strategic planning process, and I had the opportunity to watch the meeting where, where their consultant presented the feedback from the public in meetings. So, thank you all who participated in that process. But there was an online survey and a couple of public meetings, and I was very pleased to see that high-quality public education was really there at the top. Water beat it out a little bit in some cases, but that, you know, water's important. But anyway, I, so I was very pleased about that, and I am anxious to watch that process be finalized, and I'm very excited that the county is, is doing that. I also wanted to thank the speakers who came out to talk about the CIP process tonight, especially the student speakers. That's really critical to hear from our primary customers. And then also, Mrs. Willem, you're pointing out the respectful nature of the comments. That's very much appreciated by me and I'm sure the entire board to keep the comments respectful, so thank you. I just wanted to say that we haven't gotten a recommendation from our superintendent yet, so that, that is forthcoming, but what we've seen so far is a recommendation from a very hard-working internal committee, but I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. And with regard to the walkway, I voted in favor of that being on the CIP last year, and frankly, I'm beginning to question the wisdom of that. I'm starting to think very hard about it. While I'm sympathetic to the challenges that people are feeling, students are feeling to get across that way, and I understand the desire to go there, several people up here have said it's not safe, but I would go a step further and say, not only is it not safe, but it's not okay. And I hope that, I hope that we're not sanctioning that because it's not, it's not safe to do it now, and I hope that, that it frankly stops. And I agree that safe and quick access is a priority, and I think that there are ways to do it quickly and safely. And then as we consider our walkway bridge, whatever we want to call it, I, I think we need to really think hard about what the opportunity cost is associated with that and what, you know, what we might be giving up in, in the form of, you know, our adding new buses to the fleet for start times or for New Horizons, or other, other capital needs that we may have. So, anyway, I look forward to the conversation at a community-wide level and with Parks and RAC and see if it's something that's high on their radar as well, but I really am starting to question my vote on that last year. Thank you.
I'll just piggyback on that a little bit. You know, we had several speakers talk to us today about the, the safety of the, the path to, to the War Hill complex, and speaker after speaker was talking about water and mud and all that. And that's not a problem that we need, we might want to think about solving, that's a problem we have got to solve. And so, I would, I would hope, Dr. Heron, that you've, you heard the board and Mr. Snipes and Mrs. Swinton and Mr. Lynn need to get together. And, you know, we've, we saw a lot of information about SOLs and learning through our students. That's great, but the number one thing for our students is safety, and I don't know that we're serving those athletes well by.
that we're serving those athletes well by condoning either overtly or covertly the use of a path through the swamps and the woods and balance beams on, on two-by-fours over the mud, that we need to make sure that we are not either overtly or covertly. And then, and but, as a, we also have to make sure that we're giving them an acceptable option. I don't know if it's a shuttle bus run that makes a couple of runs back and forth for kids that may practice. I know a lot of those same, a lot of those same schools, sports that practice at War Hill are also util, Jamestown students go over there to practice, War Hill students go over there to practice. So we just need to make sure that we come up with the same solution for Lafayette and give those kids the opportunity to, to make practice and, and do it in a safe way. There's really no excuse for us not being able to provide adequate transportation for those students to and from practice. So I know you've heard us on that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Add, add to the outdoor classroom at James River, it was a wonderful, it's a wonderful facility, great, great opportunity for the, those teachers out, to utilize that facility to, to do something unique and, and, and give the students an experience to learn. I'd also like to thank Brian Hill, the county administrator, and John McGlinn, Dr. John McGlinn, for coming out to it and participating in that ribbon cutting as well. The cooperation that this, the school system and the county and the city have together is, is unique, and I appreciate their support, and they're working with us on that. As far as late start for high schools, we will, Dr. Heron can put some, put together some work on that. I don't know if we're going to be ready at the next work session, but it's some very soonly work session, and I think we probably should put that on the agenda to make sure that we talk about our challenges and what we can do to, to address that. Anyway, that's all good. Upcoming events, Policy Committee, October 11th at 1:30 in the Stryker Center. We also have the VSBA Annual Conference on the Horizon on November 16th through 18th at the Williamsburg Lodge and Conference Center. Upcoming meetings, October 14th at 4:30 in the Annex over at James Blair. The school board meeting, closed session to evaluate the RFPs for the superintendent's selection evaluation. We will also have a special call meeting immediately after, currently scheduled immediately after on October 14th to review the SOP, also in the Annex. Closed session, October 18th here in Building F at 6 o'clock, followed by a regular meeting at 6:30, and then we have another closed session on November 1st in Room 309 at the Annex at 6 o'clock, and then work session and action items to follow that at 6:30. With that, I think we've set our agenda for our next meeting, and without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.